Hi, so we just called the meeting to order. So on the phone, if you can't hear at any point, just let us know. The tables are spread out a little bit, so we'll speak up. So at this point, who should I turn this over to to begin?
Probably Woody.
So Woody, I'm going to turn this over to you. This is Dale Hamilton. I'm going to turn this over to you to start.
Glenn, is that you? I just sent you the briefing document. Can you print that out?
To Glenn? Oh, I'll get it. You don't work here anymore. Oh, wait a minute. You got it?
Yep.
He's got it.
Glenn has it.
Well, it's a new one. I sent three minutes ago, Glenn.
Yeah, I just got it.
Okay, so you've got version two.
Yes, I believe so.
So the email one we got yesterday is?
That's the contract.
Please double check that.
Oh, okay.
Thanks.
It's the one that sent Sarah V changes, correct?
Yeah, I've included Sarah's changes in the new version, and the document title has V2 at the end, Glenn.
No.
You may have to go back to your printer. It's a clean copy.
Okay, Glenn's going back to get the other version.
Great, thank you. Maybe we could, Woody and Sarah here, maybe you could tell us who's in the room?
This is Dale Hamilton, Counselor.
All right. Hi, Dale.
Robert Miller, Counselor.
Hi, Robert.
Heather Grundle, Counselor.
Mark Blanchett, Counselor.
Michelle Kaplan, Counselor.
I'm sorry, that was Mark, and then who else?
Michelle Kaplan.
No, you're talking to the speakerphone, not the microphone.
No, Michelle Kaplan, Counselor.
All right, hi, Michelle. It's a little hard to hear you, just to let you know.
And then we have Gary Fortier, member of the committee.
Hi, Woody.
Hey, Gary.
And David Cole.
Unaffiliated.
Hey, David.
Hey, Woody.
And that's everyone in the room. Counselor Phillips will be here shortly, and we expect Counselor Moore at some point as well.
Yeah, great.
Counsel, and what are their first names, if it's okay to use?
Both are John.
John, okay, thank you.
Yeah, they're in an FBI program, so we named them both John.
We have the document.
You do?
Yes.
Great, thank you, Glenn, for getting the next version. Did you want me to start off, Glenn, or did you have some introductory or David comments?
I would defer to you, Woody.
Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay, great. I want to emphasize that this was a massive team effort, starting with David and soon joined by the solar committee, myself, and then a little bit later, Sarah Tracy. I just want to acknowledge all the hours that everyone has spent on this since last November. It's been a lot of hard work, and it's been a pleasure for me to work with you all. I will walk through this briefing document fairly quickly in the interest of time, and I would just ask anyone in the room to just say stop or interrupt me, and so we can answer your questions. And so with that, I won't read every single line, but I wanted to first recap that this RFP was issued in early November of last year, and then broadly, we spent time studying responses between late November and early to mid-January. And then we engaged in discussions with several finalists, and one or two of them we decided not to proceed with. And the one that we shortlisted, and also want to acknowledge the understandable delays by COVID during the summer, hence the deliberations on the shortlist. We began our more intense deliberations with Sunray, who's the finalist, roughly in July up until literally this week, when Sarah just did fabulous work with Sunray's counsel and their lead negotiator in pulling this document, which you will have together. So that's the rough timeline. A quick overview on Sunray, Portsmouth State, founded in 2014. You see the states where they have been active, their project size, which will mean more later in this discussion, 2,000 KW to 10,000, or, as we say in the industry, 2 megawatts to 10 megawatts. You will hear those terms thrown back and forth. I've tried to keep it all in kilowatts in this summary document. In the end, we have two separate solar arrays that we expect to sign with Sunray. One we're calling the Industrial Road, which is in Ellsworth, is the one before us tonight, and for reasons we'll get into in a minute, the Mariahville project, which is physically adjacent, separated, I'm guessing in dozens of feet, if not 100 feet, next to Industrial Road, is a separate project, which will be dedicated to different accounts. So, short term, the request for approval and voting that we'll be asking for will be for the Industrial Road project, which you see is 2.5 megawatts with an estimated annual production of 3.1 million kilowatt-hours a year. Now, we'll get into the type of contract in a minute, but what we've done through fairly extensive deliberations and analysis is that I put in quotes "assigned" all of the non-school accounts, or what we've called city accounts, plus two of the school accounts, the Boggy Road and the soccer, to the Industrial Road project. And the balance of the school project will be assigned, and by the way, that will take the entire output of the Industrial Road project. It's amazing, it's a wonderful coincidence, but amazing how closely the output of this solar project aligns with the consumption estimated, well, or the historical, recent historical consumption of the non-school account. The Mariahville project will pick up the balance of the schools, including the high school and the combined grammar middle school, plus the number of other very small accounts with annual bills, there, you know, many of them under $1,000. And the Mariahville is going to be a separate contract with the city, and is going to be under separate guidelines in the way that the accounts are assigned to the solar project, which we will get to in a minute. So we expect the construction for both these projects to begin, and this is hot off the track this afternoon, with Sunray in the spring of next year. That says 2020, that's incorrect, it should be 2021, and the completion in the fall of next year. Now, we expect the, so that's a summary of the two projects, and in a little bit, I'm going to give you the estimated savings. So hang on to that question. The next bullet deals with the business structure or the process, and I'm going to walk through this and then ask Sarah to jump in and elaborate, or if we're needed, to correct any misstatements I make. So we will be entering into a 20-year contract, in the case of industrial, for 100% of the consumption of the non-schools plus two of the school accounts. And as I said, the Mariahville will be the other school. So to begin this process, the generators, we call them developers, another term, or Sunray, they need this contract signed before they can get financing to buy the panels, to hire the contractors. So this is, in some sense, square one for the actual project. Then, what will happen, under laws that were passed in the recent year in the state of Maine, is that Ellsworth will be paid based on a tariff rate that the Public Utility Commission issues once a year. And this rate, the dollars for this credit on our electric bill, will flow to Ellsworth first, and then, because we have a deal with the solar developer, we are going to take a portion of that total savings and pay it to the developer, in this case, 74%. And we'll get into an example of that later. Let me move on, and then we'll circle back if we have constructions, questions on the For what it's worth, they will then, once they sign this contract, they will initiate ordering of equipment and hiring of contractors, and they'll be using 450-watt panels manufactured by Longyear. Then, these don't all happen sequentially, but every January roughly, or late in the calendar year, the PUC will publish a tariff, which will be different for every year. And we'll get in later on. Once we get this signed, I will sit down with assistance from Sarah, if necessary, and walk the finance and accounting department through what a typical month will look like, and the tasks that we'll need to do to confirm that these savings are flowing. But that's down the road, we have plenty of time to consider that. So now Ellsworth has this big credit on their bill, and you're asking, what is the net effect? What's the bottom line on the annual cost of electricity for the city of Ellsworth, assuming both contracts are signed? So these are the next bullets, and these are based on recent estimates that I've been working on with Sunray. So for the Industrial Road project, again, those are all city buildings plus two medium-sized school facilities, will save about $110,000 a year. And then the Mariahville project, when signed, with the schools, the remaining school facilities, will save about $70,000 per year for 20 years, which, if you do the math, and you can correct me, or can, as I just did it quickly here at my desk, of about $180,000 a year, which over 20 years, and again, this will vary by year and by project, so we can't bring this, this is not a fixed firm number, but in the ballpark of $3.6 million in savings for the combined city buildings and school facilities. And again, this project will last for 20 years, and I want to emphasize again that internally, and it won't be complicated, but we'll need to set up a less than one-page protocol for someone in your finance and accounting department to monitor this on a monthly and quarterly basis. So let me stop there, and before we entertain questions, Sarah, please jump in and add any thoughts or flesh on the bone that you think is necessary.
All right, thank you, Woody. That was a good summary. Good evening, my name is Sarah Tracy. I have met some of you at a prior committee meeting, but some of you I haven't had the opportunity to speak with yet. I met Pierce Satwood, I'm in the Energy Group, and then I'm also a town counselor in Freeport, and we actually have executed an agreement like this. So I'm familiar with it, both from the council seat position and also from the legal position. This net energy billing agreement is sort of a general template of an agreement that many towns and cities and also businesses are entering into. It's funky, because it's part of a new regulatory program, and I just want to talk about a couple of the nuances, just so that as you talk about it and as you look through the document, you understand the overall structure, because I think sometimes these agreements are mischaracterized. First, this is a financial agreement. So you are helping solar in the sense that this agreement helps get a solar project financed, and therefore, the solar project is putting its energy onto the grid, and you're greening the grid. But you are not, through this agreement, purchasing the power from the solar facility, and that is a material difference. So you're not purchasing green power, you're basically purchasing credits or offsets, which are savings to your electricity bill. And you are not purchasing renewable energy credits, because that would have changed the price structure, and that was something that Ellsworth decided not to do. But this is, like I said, typical of a lot of these agreements. It is really a sort of an economic decision that is bolstered by the fact that it helps the solar facility being built in Maine and getting its power to the grid, which is essentially overall an environmental benefit. I can go through later. I have sort of a list of risks that we, to Ellsworth as a result of this agreement, that we negotiated, you know, we negotiated mitigation language for, so we tried to mitigate all, as many risks as we could for you. But there are still a couple of remaining risks that you should be aware of, you know, it is a 20-year agreement, and it's a real contract, so you should know that before you execute it. But overall, Sunray has proved to be a partner that's worked in good faith, and, you know, I think that the overall document that you have does, I think, a pretty good job of reducing the exposure to Ellsworth as much as possible. And I'm happy to answer any questions as we get into the details.
Great. Thank you both for giving us that overview. I do want to, just for anybody, the public that is watching, if you have a question or comment, you can submit it to my email address, dhamilton@ellsworthmaine.gov. We'll also be taking, this is on the agenda for our Monday meeting, and we'll certainly take any comments and read those at the meeting as well, so we can carry that forward.
Just a couple things, and, oh, that's right, I was talking to the phone again. Just a couple things, I want to make sure Woody heard you say that. His document says Tuesday. So make sure that he and Sarah understand that it's Monday, the 19th, not Tuesday.
Yeah, that was my error.
Okay, I don't place blame.
I think I slipped that in, but yes, I'll be available on Monday.
Okay, and on Woody's numbers on the savings, we need to understand that the majority of the savings on the city buildings is going to be enterprise funds. Don't expect the Ellsworth municipal electric bill to go down $110,000. The water department is, water and sewer are our biggest users. Those enterprise funds, it's not going to affect your tax rate, but it will affect your user rates if they save that money. But just to be open, that this first shot is going to be on the municipal building, but the majority of the savings are going to be enterprise funds outside of taxation, and the school department for the two buildings we're including, or the two accounts we're including. So the big savings to the taxpayer is going to be on the second phase of this, when we put in the two big school buildings. That'll come off the school budget. But municipal side, on this first go-around, it's going to be mostly enterprise funds.
So I have one question, and you can let me know if this question does not make sense. This is very complicated and...
Could we ask you to identify yourself as you have questions, please?
Oh, sure. This is Counselor Dale Hamilton.
Hi, Dale, thank you.
So obviously, with solar projects, a project like this, this is, it's being subsidized, that's why we're able to get the tax credits. And that subsidization is to bring renewable energy sources to the community and to the state, obviously. At the same time, as that happens, as you take energy off of the existing grid, there is, for the existing providers of the traditional source of energy, there's a decline in the purchasing of that power, that energy. And then, so my question is, is there any way to understand the volume that we're drawing off of the traditional grid? Will there be a significant, is there the potential for a significant rate change for residential users of that traditional power source? And basically, what I'm trying to understand is, as the city gains a decrease in costs, which presumably gets passed on either through the enterprise accounts with rates or through taxation, do the residents end up paying more for their electricity because we've taken that off of the traditional grid?
So Dale, what do you hear? I hear two questions. One is relative to the other sources of electricity, the other generators, and two, what is the impact on homeowners in Ellsworth? Is that right?
Yes.
So the first question, the, of course, depends on the time of day, but these solar arrays typically will reach their peak production in the early to mid-afternoon through late afternoon, and on a scorching hot day in New England, when the grid in New England is reaching its higher peaks, and for that matter, most of the time, the fuel, as we say in the business, on the margin, or the fuel that's firing electric generation that's called on most recently, is natural gas. So most of what these solar arrays production across the New England region, and certainly in Maine, will be displacing, not all the time, but most of the time, they'll be displacing natural gas. And there's oodles of studies on this, done by the pool operator called ISO New England, and so if any of you have follow-up questions or want to read white papers on this very question, I'm happy to get you links if you let Glenn know. As to your second question, it's a two-part answer. The, most of our electric bills are split between paying for energy and then paying for what we call T and D, or transmission and distribution. And the T and D, in this case, is provided by Versant, formerly Emera. And part of the savings that's being passed on to Ellsworth is a reduction in the T and D rate. So Dale, to your question, when Ellsworth is experiencing the savings on the T and D portion, they will be allowed to make up that difference, if you will, to make them whole by increasing T and D rates on all customers. There's a formula which they have to follow, but technically speaking, there will be a small increase across all rates on the T and D portion of the bill. And Sarah, I should say, formerly worked for the Public Utility Commission, so Sarah, I invite you to add any color to that response.
No, I think that's accurate, and the only piece, so Woody is right with respect to natural gas is the fuel that will likely, most likely be displaced. And with respect to the impact on the homeowners' bills, there is a, you know, there's no such thing as a free lunch. So this program brings great savings to municipalities and businesses, but somebody's got to, you know, make up the difference. And that usually is passed through in the form of what they call stranded costs, that is shared by all customers in their, on their T and D bills. There is also an argument, I think, and Woody, correct me if I'm wrong, that, you know, this solar energy will be just dumped on the grid and sold in the wholesale market, and I think that that may have the possibility that the supply rates generally could come down a little bit from the, you know, sort of low-cost energy in the market. Do you agree with me, Woody, on that one?
Yeah, yeah, that's right. So that's the other part of the bill. Again, two parts, the energy part and T and D. So what Versant will do with the energy that it buys, because the utilities can't own generation anymore, is they will turn around and sell the physical electrons, if you will, into the marketplace, often at a lower price. And so there is likely to be some savings on that side. And Dale, I also want to add one other thing. There, and this is a two-part answer. One, for homeowners, people who own their own homes or apartment buildings, it's reasonably attractive to install solar on your roof if all the parameters amount, there's no shading, it's got a good direction, it's accessible. And for homeowners installing on their own roof, you see a, I just did an analysis, about eight to 10-year payback based on incentives available. And there's a second option for homeowners called community solar, where you do not have to have the solar panels physically on your roof, but rather can contract with a solar farm, not too different than this one, and you can get, if you will, a same kind of credit on your bill as a homeowner. And the savings are typically less than what we're seeing here for this commercial load... And the savings are typically less than what we're seeing here for this commercial load. But I want to emphasize for anyone listening, and certainly any of your constituents, but right now, there are a number of generators who are offering what's called community solar, so that indeed the homeowner can also take advantage of this without having the panels on their roof. Did I address your questions, Dale?
Yeah, and, and this is Dale again. I, I would just say to that comment, that it is important to distinguish the fact that the homeowners who can afford to do that, the people who are going to get most impacted negatively will be the lower-income population, and, and the costs get disproportionately placed. The more that households that can afford to purchase what you just talked about, the home solar panels, will increase the, the T and D rates and will disproportionately impact on a group of people in, in the community that are least able to absorb that kind of expense. Is that a fair statement?
Well, I, I personally have not read the white paper that, that, and I'm sure someone's written one, Dale, that outlined what you just said, the impact on low income. I would, I would say that if, for apartment dwellers who pay rent, often will pay their own electric utility costs, or the apartment building owners may enjoy some of the benefits of solar. But I, I'm not an expert in studying the impact on low-income homeowners or renters. But yes, if they pay an electric bill, they will see a slight increase in their T and D costs.
Counselor Miller.
Yeah, hey Woody, it's Bob. But also those, those T and D costs are going up whether we buy these credits or not. It's going to happen anyway.
That's right.
It's part of the bill, so.
That's right.
I just wanted to make that clear as well.
Can, can you talk a little bit about that? That's important. Is it because they're, they'll just be selling it to someone else?
They'll sell it to somebody else. If we don't buy it, somebody else will.
So, so I agree with that, and let me just comment on that, because I was going to make that point, but I had figured that we had enough discussion about it, so I kept my mouth shut. But I think that's a really important point. This is a program that is available and attractive to municipalities, businesses, all kinds of entities. And so the program will likely be as fully subscribed as possible, given, given the, sort of the nature of the savings that are available, and also the level of interest that, that we've all seen across the state. So these impacts that we were talking about earlier, potential impacts of stranded costs increasing, from the program, increasing T and D rates for electricity ratepayers across the state, that will happen regardless. And so the question for you all, and it is, there's really no right answer, but the question for you all is, do you also participate in some of the benefits of the program? And there are risks associated with, with participating. It's, you know, again, no free lunch. There are risks of a 20-year contract, so we've got to talk about those. But, but it is true that these, these impacts on the T and D rates from this program will likely happen regardless of what Ellsworth does.
Thank you for raising that. And I would just say, if you have any information, don't hold back. I know, speaking for myself, I have not been involved in this, so that's what the purpose for tonight was, to get educated. And I'm asking questions, not to argue for or against, just to build an understanding about this in advance of the meeting. So please share anything that you have that would be helpful as we go forward.
Other questions?
Questions?
This is John Phillips. What are the risks for the 20-year contract you referred to, ma'am?
The risks are a cou- a couple full. Some, we've, we've sort of mitigated through the language of the contract, and I'll, and I'll talk about those first, and then some that remain. So there is always a risk that you, you pay more to the developer than you're getting from the credit. And we mitigated that risk in this agreement because we have made it so that what you pay to the developer is a percentage of what actually ends up on your bill. So that's one risk that you had that we mitigated. Another risk is that you link yourself, I say you marry up with a project that is sort of underperforming, or it never gets off the ground, and you're, you're tied to them, and you, you can't do anything else. So we mitigated that by creating an early termination rate for Ellsworth. If this project really can't get off the ground and it does not reach commercial operation within, within, I think it's 24 months of execution, and I'll check that in a second, let me just...
Your right.
Yeah, 24 months of the effective date of the agreement. Or if the, once the project is operating, and it produces less than 50% of the expected energy that you, that you thought would be coming out of that project, meaning it's really not producing the level of credits that you thought, for 18 consecutive months, Ellsworth has an opportunity to, not an allegation, but an opportunity to terminate. And finally, you know, there's always a risk in any agreement of 20 years in length that the law changes. And there is a change in law provision under Section 6.4 that says if the law changes, the parties are obligated to get back together and try and negotiate, but if you cannot come to an agreement, then the party who is impacted by the change may, may request termination of the agreement. So there isn't, there is an out clause. There are some remaining risks that we still have done our best to mitigate, but haven't been able to remove altogether for you, and, and so it's important that you know them. You are agreeing in this agreement to purchase, particularly the, the industrial road agreement that's, that's in front of you. You are agreeing to purchase all of the net energy billing credit output of this facility. So they're going to generate all the energy they can, they're going to dump it on the grid, and for every kilowatt hour that they dump on the grid, there's going to be a monetary credit that comes out of it for you guys. And there is a risk that you've signed up to buy more credits than you can use. And what we have done to, to try and mitigate that is, we've, we've looked at the, and Woody has done the yeoman's work on this, looked at the, like, typical usage of the accounts and the typical billings for the accounts in any, in every, any given year, and has tried to match it up, plus added some, a couple of extra school accounts, so that mostly it should be that your, your bills for the year are, are greater than the, than the offsets that you're going to get from the project. So you're never in a situation where you're, these credits can be banked, but if they're banked for longer than 12 months, they expire, and you can't, you know, if you don't use them, it's a use it or lose it. If you don't use it after 12 months, they're, they're done. So we have tried to match up the, the, the billing such that you're not out over your skis and you haven't agreed to take on more than the offsets or credits that you can use. But, you know, that is an ongoing risk. There's a mitigation for that. You can switch out and add accounts. So that is possible, but, but it, it takes some attention. And then there's another risk, which is that, you know, Sunraise is not a silly or stupid company, and they have negotiated an early termination clause, that if they don't get their permit approvals or their agreements, then they can terminate early. And we tried to narrow that as much as possible, pinning them down to exactly what could be the basis for that early termination. But there is a risk that, you know, if they do exercise that out, that you're back to the beginning. So you're taking a risk of, quote unquote, marrying Sunraise, and it's a little bit of a good faith leap that, you know, they're going to develop this project. Now, they have the same incentives that you do, they want to get paid, and they don't get paid if this project doesn't generate. So I'm not too concerned about the risk, but it is a risk nonetheless. If you were to be back to the beginning a year from now, you, you potentially might be in a different situation where the program has changed, it's not as good anymore, that kind of stuff. That is a risk. I don't see it as a high risk, but there you go. There is also a risk of, you know, breach of contract. And in Section 9.4(c) of the agreement, this agreement contains a waiver of immunity for contract claims. So Ellsworth has basically said in Section 9.4(c), yes, we get it, we are entering into a 20-year contract, and if you, Sunraise, feel that we've breached the agreement or have contract claims that you want to bring to the court, we are not going to claim governmental immunity for contract claims. We are, we are not going to try and get out from under the contract on that basis. Now, that does not prevent you from defending yourself on the basis of, of, you know, contract claims, but it just means you're not going to try and use your, your immunity. I think this is consistent with, you know, how you've dealt with your prior contracts in the past, but it does mean that if you're under litigation and you breached, there's, there's risk of damages. So that, those are the risks that I, the remaining risks that I see. The good thing about this contract, you know, is that you don't have to put up any upfront capital. Like, we were talking earlier about, you know, whether people can access clean energy. Part of the problems with accessing it is, it requires oftentimes, you know, if you're really going to, you know, part-own a, a solar facility through community solar, you gotta, you gotta put up some money. And this is not structured that way. This is a situation where when they generate and they dump their electricity onto the grid, credits or offsets will be generated, and you participate in those savings. So there's, it's, it's a pretty, pretty favorable program.
And, and just to jump in after that medium-sized list of risks, I, I trust, if you've been reading the BDN or the American, you've been reading about the other cities and towns in Maine that have signed, not the same contract, but a similar contract with similar risks. You know, everyone is unique, and we haven't done side-by-side comparison on all the other But the, the other commercial customers and businesses and nonprofits and municipalities are facing many of the same risks when they sign on with Sunraise or, or other generation developers, of which there's quite a few in Maine. And if, I just want to add one other risk that we've mitigated, and this, this tariff that we spoke about that's set by the PUC annually. There was some nervousness, and this is when David was city manager, and we had long discussions about how do we mitigate any risk that this tariff may go up or down and, and harm Ellsworth? Well, we, we selected the percent approach, we called it, which is just strictly a percent of whatever the tariff is that year. And we had three options, which I won't get into, but we selected one which we think presents the lowest risk to the, to the city of Ellsworth. John, did you have any follow-up on that?
No, thank you.
David Cole, citizen. Just a couple of comments. It was about a year ago we first put out the RFP, responding to and hopefully taking advantage of the new net metering law that went into place with some, you know, hefty incentives. And as has been previously stated, while the costs are being socialized through, through the system, you know, what we do in Ellsworth here doesn't necessarily directly impact, if we don't take advantage of it, someone else will. We felt some time pressure, we wanted to do it right. The council appointed this committee, and it's worked for almost a year towards this objective. Wanted to do it right, but time was important because, and Sarah can speak to this much better than I, but there's a risk at some point where they're going to get, they can only handle so much capacity, so many projects, as such. I, I would add that on the risk mitigation side, Woody just brought up the issue of the tariff, that 26%, in my mind is a hedge. If tariffs go up, which they generally do, our, our take goes up with an expanding pie. If the overall cost of electricity went down, which probably won't happen, if it did, yes, we would get a smaller amount, but we'd get a smaller amount of a smaller pie. So I, I think it's hedged very well. The other thing I would add is that, yes, we don't want to have stranded net metering credits that we've paid for. However, and again, correct me if I'm wrong on this, Woody, but I believe we're doing a 90% allocation. In other words, we're not trying to get credits for every ounce of electricity we're using right now. Put in a 10% allowance, because over time, there will likely be energy efficiency initiatives like, you know, LED streetlights, more efficient generators, and other things. Now, that might be offset to some extent by growth, new public safety facilities, electric charging stations in the future, if we end up with electric fleets of cars in 10 years, all of those things go into it. But I think we've done, the committee's done a, with the support of Woody and Sarah, have done a good calculation on that. The last thing I would speak to is, we received nine proposals to the RFP, and we worked through at least three or four of those as potential candidates before narrowing it down. The only proposal, to my memory, from Ellsworth was Sunraise. We were not committed to doing a Ellsworth project, we were looking for the best project. In this case, ended up aligning with an Ellsworth project, mostly coincident. However, we did have the luxury of working with Sunraise from the permitting side. They did go through planning board. It was some confusion in the public, because naturally they were saying, well, they're building a solar facility, the city wants to buy solar power, so isn't this it? Well, it ended up being that way in terms of what's being brought for you. But part of that is, I think it's fair to say that this particular project is fairly far along compared to other solar projects in the state. And that, secondly, we, I still say we, the city has gotten to know the principals and Patrick Jackson and the others, and that's something, that's not something you would get with a project located some distance away. So I think all those things speak well to this project. You know, in some ways, if the legislation changed and for some reason the, the credits were diminished or eliminated, the worst case in that regard is we go back to paying what we did before, which is the tariff rate. So I think the city's pretty well positioned with the help of our advisors. It's been mitigated to a very reasonable extent, and I don't know if a deal like this will be still on the table in six months or a year. Policies can change, things can change, but I think that all in all, this is a good deal for the city. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm just looking around, looking...
Other questions or comments? What's that?
I was just looking around, seeing if anybody had anything to say, and everyone looks like they're, they're good. Except for Mr. Fortier, he's headed to the mic. He's headed to the mic.
Gary Fortier. I've been honored to be a part, I was asked after I got off council last year to remain on this committee because it was a passion of mine. I've been after David Cole for five years to get a solar project in Ellsworth, and he's ignored me. And thank you for ignoring me, because the laws changed, they made it much more lucrative for the city of Ellsworth. I can tell you, I have people down that I've known through MMA in Southern Maine that actually signed agreements that they're paying a premium for solar power above the standard offer. That's where we might have been if he hadn't held us back and said, let's wait, let's wait. I'm her, here are rumblings. But David mentioned that we had the nine people. I don't remember Sunraise being of the initial rule, and if they were, we stayed away from them because they were in the planning board. Once they became a viable option for us, we jumped all over them because it was an Ellsworth project that people could drive by and see and say, Ellsworth is associated with that. So I agree with David Cole that this is a good project. This is the first time today that I've seen that we're splitting it up, but I understand completely why. Two separate contracts, two separate fields, gives us a little bit of leeway. I certainly hope that Monday night, when the full council is here, that we can get an approval to move ahead with this. And thank you for the opportunity.
This is Sarah Tracy. May I say something about why we're doing the projects one at a time?
Yeah, sure.
So during this negotiation process, we've had a couple of hiccups that we had to solve. One of them, and this is a new program, and there's lots of developers that are developing projects, and really the PUC is sort of developing their approach on the fly. But one of the hiccups that we had, and this is really by way of background, because I think we've solved it, but was that it has always been the case that the rules wanted the projects to be discrete projects in order to be eligible for this program. They did not want basically a developer coming and developing a 20-megawatt project, but then chopping it up into four, five-megawatt chunks, because in order to be eligible for this program, your projects have to be under five megawatts. So they had, in order to be discrete, they started, the PUC started interpreting, okay, well, what does that mean? And they kind of started saying, well, they can't be co-located, and they've had this standard of evolving criteria that is trying to get developers to understand whether their projects will qualify or not. In late September, the PUC issued an advisory ruling that contained criteria that cast into question whether these two projects, which are located very close together, could both qualify, meaning that, we were worried for a while, and so was Sunraise, that because they are less than a mile apart, that they may be deemed not discrete, and therefore only one could qualify. Which is why we kept negotiating the industrial road project, and also those accounts didn't have to be consolidated because they were not the school accounts, so they already had T and D and supply on the same bill, which was better. For a variety of reasons, we moved forward with the industrial road project, and then the Mariahville Road project, we needed to get clarity on this proximity rule, and then we also needed to make sure that the school accounts would be consolidated such that both supply and T and D would be on the same CMP bill, or sorry, Burson bill. We have since gotten clarity on the proximity issue. We reached out to the PUC general counsel, who agreed with our and Sunraise's interpretation that it doesn't matter how close the projects are when the two projects don't add up to more than five megawatts in total. And that was Sunraise's hunch all along, but for a while, it was just not clear. So we have gotten that clarity, and we got that clarity early this week. So that is one reason why the Mariahville project is a little bit further behind in terms of, that's why the agreement, one of the reasons the agreement is not in front of you. Another reason is that, and this is the second hiccup, I've mentioned a couple of times, the consolidation of the school accounts, so that you've got all those charges, supply and T and D being on one bill. We, and Woody, again, did a lot of, most of the legwork on this, had to work with Liberty Power, which is the supplier, and Burson, which is obviously the distribution company, to make that happen. It took much longer than one might think, but as of late this week, that too has been solved. So we are in good shape for the Mariahville project, but that, those are the reasons that the Mariahville project is not in front of you right now. And now, we do need to just finalize the language, which includes, you know, a method of allocating the credits to the accounts, and you will see that very soon. But that's why you're not seeing it tonight.
And I think we're hoping to bring, Glenn, I hope I am right, to bring that before you at next month's council meeting. Is that right?
Yes, yeah, for November.
So we did what we could to accelerate it, but we hit a couple snags that we didn't control.
Just one other point of clarification on that, Sarah and Woody. Also, the first phase of the project was further ahead. They had an agreement with wherever the power company is.
Burson.
Burson, thank you. Whereas the second phase is not as far along, correct?
David, just to add, in recent inquiry, given this delay, they expect to be building the project concurrently and are giving us the same completion date, as I reviewed earlier, of fall of next year.
Yeah, but they'd had, last I knew, they had an interconnection agreement with Burson.
Yeah.
Thank you, on the first phase, but it was unclear on the second phase, but, okay. Thank you.
David and I had to become somewhat Burson interconnection queue experts. We learned through looking at the nine proposals that some of the developers really had not done their homework on the proper paperwork to interconnect with Burson. But we solved that issue months ago, and the Sunraise project is in the queue, the highest queue position and has the agreement in hand.
This is Dale, and I just, I want to thank both of you and also the committee that put the time in. This certainly is a head-scratcher with the level of details and developing it so that it can be understood in terms of the context. And certainly on Monday, that will be real important to be able to explain this again to the public as well. But I appreciate all of the effort that you all went through, because there's a lot of proposals that you reviewed.
Even as deep into it as I have gotten over the last few years, without these two people on the speakerphone right now, we wouldn't be anywhere near where we are now. And for the people that don't know, Woody is also the consultant we worked with on trying to get natural gas to Ellsworth. So we have a long track record, and he's a smart dude. You owe me a beer for that one, Woody.
Yeah, I do, I do. Thank you, Gary. And enjoy spending the summers in Trenton as well, so I'm in the neighborhood. This year, a lot longer than I have been in the past, March through mid-October. Any other questions or comments? Or is it appropriate to get a sense of the room at all?
We don't vote.
That may not be appropriate.
No, it's not for this evening, because we don't take a vote on, during a meeting like this.
Okay.
Are there any questions?
No, I don't have any questions from the public. Looks like we're good. Thank you very much.
Thank you all.
You're welcome. If there's any other follow-up questions, please email Glenn, and he'll forward them to us. Or if you want to set up a call, I'm sure Glenn can handle that or arrange for it. Thank you for your attention.
Yep, thank you.
Thank you, everybody.
Thanks, Woody, thanks, Sarah.
Thank you.
Any other, this is, motion to adjourn? Yes?
Motion to adjourn.